Alderman Wen. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Holmes. Alderman Tendem. Alderman Grover. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burrus. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, November 24th, 2014 meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. And I wanted to report on my trip to Springfield. I went to lobby on Minimum Manning, claiming that our fire chief was a better person to determine the number of firemen we needed than somebody from outside Evanston, an arbitrator who did not know fire science as well as Greg Clyburn, certainly didn't know our community as well as someone who'd lived here all his life and raised his family here and been our fire chief for years. So, we lost that battle, but during it, I learned to thoroughly appreciate the Evanston City Council and our staff and the fact that we vote on good information. And I also greatly appreciate public comments because not being allowed to speak myself at that event, I greatly appreciate citizens who come and speak, and I appreciate Evanston's proud tradition of citizen comments. So, thank you all for being here, and congratulations, Evanston City Council and staff. We vote on solid information, not on rumors and innuendo. So, and I would like to say that our senator, Senator Bisk, does a wonderful job and is very interested in facts and is a wonderful representative for all of us. City manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Several announcements. First, I'd like to ask Annie Cokely, the head of downtown Evanston, as well as Johanna Niden, our economic development manager, to talk about the holiday tree lighting coming up on November 29th.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. We're here to talk about the exciting things that are going to be happening this Saturday, as well as all throughout the holiday season. Annie, I'll turn it over to Annie in just a second, but for those of you that do not know, Shop Small for the Holidays, Shop Small Business Saturday, is small businesses' answer and American Express' answer to Black Friday and Cyber Monday. And we have been pounding the pavement, and many of you have, all of you have with us, been reminding residents and shoppers in Evanston to shop small for the holidays. So, we're going to show you two videos, the results of our work. Our two interns for the economic development group couldn't be here tonight. One is hopefully is traveling safely back to Indiana, and another had her final class before the holiday break. So, they both really wanted to be here, but they've done excellent work, and I think you'll see how nice they've done. But I'll turn it over to Annie, and she can tell you a little bit about what's happening Fri-- I'm sorry, Saturday.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. Again, partnering with the economic development staff and the district heads from all of the commercial districts across Evanston, we are cross-promoting small shopping. Due to the generous donation of the Evanston Chamber of Commerce, we will once again have the holiday trolley, but this year, instead of it circling just around downtown, it will be going to all the major commercial districts to pick up shoppers to come and go from all of the other districts. So, I think that's a great addition that we've been able to provide. Maybe not just yet, but in a second, you'll receive a brochure of activities and the happenings that will be happening downtown Evanston this Saturday, from deals to entertainment. And we really were hoping to push shopping during the day and then sticking around for the tree lighting at night, and then dinner and/or a movie after that. So, I think we can turn it over. Is there a video or something?
Two business district heads, Tim Peterson and Malik Turley, came to share what their business districts are doing for Shop Small Business Saturday. So, I'll let Malik go first.
Hello. Main Street, my name is Malik Turley. I run Hip Circle Studio, and I'm the president of the Main Street Merchants. And we have a variety of businesses that are providing events, specials, and treats to shoppers, starting at 10:00 a.m. and continuing to about 5:00 p.m. Our intention is that our events end in time for people to make it into downtown Evanston for the tree lighting. So, we've worked pretty hard at not overlapping too much. We are thrilled that we will have carolers on Main Street because, you know, Main Street, small town, carolers, it all goes together. And so, we were able to get the ETC choir to come to Main Street before they head into downtown Evanston. So, that will be one of the events that we have planned. And I think that's all I want to say about that. Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Tim Peterson from Squeeze Box Books on Chicago Avenue, and I'm also president of Chicago Dumpster Merchants Association. I just wanted to say a big thank you to city council for continuing to hand out the great merchant grants to all the business districts. It's been a real boon to us to allow us to do the marketing and streetscaping and all kinds of things. And we, especially with this holiday season, we turned that marketing to right on the coattails of Small Business Saturday that American Express has pushed so hard. So, we turned it into this, we sort of created our own campaign of a love local, local love, specifically for Chicago Dumpster, the bags that you're seeing. And we're giving out, a number of the merchants are giving out 15 free bags to the first customers on Small Business Saturday. We sent out a 10,000-piece mailing, we did bannos around the neighborhood, we did advertising in local papers, and this is all due to the combination of the great merchants grant and our member dues. So, thank you very much.
Okay, and then if you bear with us for about another 90 seconds, Cindy's going to play two videos. We did a mashup of all the local merchants for Chicago Dumpster, for Main Street, for Central Street. So, we did a few of these, and we've been posting them throughout our social media. So, she's going to show the mashup of the Chicago Dumpster videos, and then she's going to, we're going to debut the city council mashup of Shop Small for the Holidays.
Shop local.
Shop small.
Please support small businesses on--
The 29th of November.
Small Business Saturday.
And just consider shopping locally.
I know we're coming to the holiday season.
And during the holidays, we want to invite you down to shop with us.
Support Evanston businesses.
And we will help you find the perfect gifts.
We love our small artisans, so we invite you to shop local and come to Chicago Dumpster.
This is a great place to shop for the holidays.
Come on in, we have tons of perfect holiday gifts.
Hope to see you on November 29th.
Thank you for shopping local this holiday season.
I'll show it anyway.
Hi, I'm Alderman Judy Fisk.
Hi, I'm Anne Rainey, Alderman of the Grade A Board.
Hi, my name is Jay Grover, I'm the Alderman for Evanston's 7th Board.
Hello, my name is Peter Braithwaite, I'm Alderman for the 2nd Board.
Hi, this is Alderman Burrus, Holmes of 5th Board.
Hi, I'm Don Wilson, I'm the Alderman of Evanston's 1st Board.
Hi, I'm Nathan Burrus, Alderman of the 11th Board.
Hi, I'm Mark Cullen, Alderman of the 6th Board.
Hi, I'm Melissa Witt, Alderman of the 3rd Board.
Hello, I'm Mayor Elizabeth Tishtoff.
And we're here to encourage our residents to--
Just wait, it's Small Business Saturday on November 29th.
Come to Evanston and shop in our array, a fantastic retail store.
Because it's a great place to shop.
And we want you to shop small.
To have the community support Small Business Saturday.
Make sure you explore all of our fantastic shops, businesses, and--
Whether you make the big shopping experiences--
So, thank you for shopping Evanston on Saturday.
Support Small Business Saturday.
So, we have a Main Street and a Central Street one, too, but I realize the hour is late. So, each alderman has their own video that is on our city YouTube that we will send the link out, and we will be posting these over the next week, too. So, you can all post on your social media. And I should also add, the American Express bags were provided by American Express. The city did not pay for those.
Ms. Niden, before you sit down, one other event that's happening on Saturday is a football game between Northwestern and Illinois. And can you talk a little bit about what we're doing with the city lot on Central Street?
Sure. So, one of the biggest challenges we've heard from the Central Street merchants is that people come and, come to the game, and they block up traffic and parking, and it's harder for the merchants. And the Central Street merchants are really concerned about making sure that shoppers can come to Central Street. The game time kickoff is 11 o'clock. So, in order to make sure that we preserve the parking lot that's at Central and Stewart, we will be closing it for a short period of time from, I believe it's 7:30? Eight, eight o'clock till a little bit before kickoff, to encourage people visiting for the football game to park in our downtown parking garages or at Ryan Field. So, we will open it again right before shopping, and most of the stores open at 11 o'clock anyway. And the merchants have embraced this, and we've reviewed it with them, and they're okay with that.
And before you step down, could you tell us who the interns were that worked on these wonderful videos?
So, both were first years at the University of Illinois Chicago, Lynn Schneider and Lauren Kalbundy. So, I think many of you got to meet Lauren Kalbundy because she was our videographer on this, for the most part.
Thank you very much. And thank Johanna and Megan Jones and Paul Zalmazak for all the good work that you've done, really embracing this idea of shopping local. The existing Evanston businesses are really the strongest part of our whole economic development program, and we're absolutely committed to help those businesses that are here in Evanston be as good as they can be, and certainly the holiday season is part of that. So, thank you all for that. Madam Mayor, the last announcement I have is regarding trash collection schedules regarding over the Thanksgiving holidays. You mayworm, the Assistant Director of Public Works, is here to talk about that and anything else you'd like to talk about.
Not really. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Of course, Thursday is Thanksgiving Day, and of course, that means no solid waste recycling or yard waste collection. Solid waste and yard waste will resume on Friday, being one day late. All the recycling will be collected on Saturday, the 29th this year. That's pretty typical. One other thing I wanted to mention, we are attempting to extend street cleaning into the first week of December, should the weather cooperate with us. So, we are encouraging all residents to please use the alternate parking restrictions as we typically do, as we try to make one last sweep through the city and clean everything up. Any questions?
Alderman Rainey.
Tell us the dates from and to for the cleanup, the alternate.
So, yeah, what we're trying to do is basically follow the same schedule. So, Mondays would be the one-sided streets--
But starting what day?
On December 1st, which is Monday. And then it would run from December 1st through December 5th, which is that Friday. So, we're Monday, December 1st, and then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So, we're trying to make a big effort to get everything cleaned up.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you. City clerk, do you have communications?
None, neither even the mayor. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next is public comment. Please, I'm going to call the first four names. Come up, give your name, and you each have three minutes. Georgina Starling, Michael Tannen, Junaid Riske, and Mr. Halliburton.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Georgina Vale Starling. I reside at 1119 Monroe Street in Evanston, and I am also a longtime city employee. I am here today to discuss the resolution 91R14, which is the fiscal year 2015 budget of the city of Evanston. And this is in regards to the recommendation to have only one staff member to run the vital records office. I don't know if some of you have received from me descriptive, a descriptive about what we do in the office. In other words, it was more than that that was shown in the budget memo. It went from explaining the reasons why persons come into the office or request certificates by mail. There was a total of 12, as opposed to that one that was shown in the budget memo. I think the only two were mentioned there. They were like approximately three pages of the, what we do in the office, which is a lot of work. It's more than what most people have the misconception about, that we just take care of the public that comes to the counter. There is a lot more entailed. We have to align with Springfield, with the vital records office. It's, it can be a very complex position. So, I just want to say that in 2013, we had a total of 4,022 births, and there's, in 2014, 4,000 were projected. Death certificates, 2013, there were 274. The year prior, it was 1,109, and projected for 2014 was 1,000. Average of 5,000 birth and death certificates are registered or come into our office per year. That's about 20 per day, in addition to processing payments, performing all other duties. One person cannot process that many requests and provide all of the other services, even if other department staff were to chip in. This includes the following tasks: researching a statewide database, correcting errors, discrepancies, bookkeeping, account reconciliation. This is a highly functional job that involves commitment that exceeds other staff members chipping in for coverage issues or cross-departmental training to provide the level of customer service expected of the city of Evanston employees, and adhere to strict state regulations.
Starling, I do need you to wrap up, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess what I want to say is that I was kind of surprised to see that certain decisions were made without, you know, being aware of the detail of the work that we do. And I also want to say that I reached out to my alderman, and I was very disappointed that they never acknowledged me. So, thanks for--
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Tannen, and I'm president of the Evanston Public Library Board of Trustees. Seven of our nine members are here today to urge support of our budget. Tonight, I am not going to dignify with a response the personal attacks on our board, our backgrounds, our integrity, or our sense of responsibility. We work hard, we work for free, we work transparently, and we work for all of Evanston. We are Evanston. Collectively, between the nine of us, we have lived in Evanston for more than 200 years. As for the often repeated charge that we're not elected, there's a reason for that. According to state law, trustees in cities are appointed, in villages, they are appointed. Talking about our budget in terms of a percentage increase, namely, an 11% increase, is a misleading metric because the Evanston Public Library has been undernourished for years and years. We believe that the most accurate metric is per capita spending, per Evanston resident, and the numbers speak for themselves. $67 per person in Evanston, 173 in Skokie, 183 in Oak Park, a very comparable suburb, and $191 in Northbrook. So, what does that $67 get the residents of Evanston? And here come the stats. We are a one-stop-service shop for literacy, lifetime learning, and civic engagement. These are numbers through October 31st. Nearly 76,000 free internet sessions, 476,000 free website visits, 540,000 visits to all three of our branches, circulation of 887,000 books, 36,000 eBooks, 16,000 audiobooks, 139 movies shown for free, 800 reading programs for children, a summer reading game, 2,300 kids and 475 teens, a youth adult book club, a League of Graphic Novels Readers Book Club, a Hispanic Book Club, a history book club, a nonfiction book club, African-American book club. We have an ongoing series, 11 Months of African-American History, one-year, a one-year program studying World War I, and again, the Mission Impossible program. These, many of these programs were developed independently, based on ideas of our staff embraced by our director. More stats. We have collaborated with the Day J Coleman Foundation, the District 65 PTA Council, the Family Action Network, and the Cradle to Career Initiative, so we can have a better understanding of community needs and the role of the library. I talked to you last week about the fact that we housed income tax preparers at the library. We have mental health care workers, we have workforce development. We recently initiated a program to teach seniors computer programming and how to navigate through the computers at Blake Manor, Ebenezer Prim, and The Grove. We had 40 classes and 172 students. I talked to you last week about the Special Resource Fair. We have the District 65 PTA Council Series. We have the Youth Violence Prevention Program with the Day J Coleman Foundation. We just are about to announce a Middle East Studies Program of, over the course of six months, hosted with Northwestern.
Mr. Tannen, I do need you.
I'm almost done.
Thank you.
I'm almost done. We have the Produce Mobile, which provides services to 300 people. We deliver services to the YWCA. We have Affordable Care Navigators at the library, 7:34 hours per week. We deliver books to Meals at Home, campus kitchens, and the Erie Family Health Center. As for our capital budget, I heard Alderman Burrus earlier today talk about the problem of kicking improvements down the road. The library, on its own, initiated a detailed capital reserve analysis. Over the course of five years, we are paying as we go. $43,000 are going to be paid through our operating budget.
Mr. Tannen, please.
I'm nearly done. For library roof maintenance, main library emergency doors and replacements, and the main library space study, and the redevelopment of the lush space will not cost the taxpayers a dime. That's a lot for 67 bucks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had to agree with the last speaker. There's politics here against things. At the last council meeting, we were introduced to Minnie Abe. As I recall, Abraham Lincoln was an honest person in the state of Illinois, a figure of large stature. Minnie Abe, as to me, represents really what's wrong with state government and local government. Ponzi really represents what's happening with this city, its lack of fiscal integrity and budgeting. As I've been asking, where is the engineering report you owe us on the water department? The water department mess dwarfs the library in its mess. None of you have been willing to deal with it for many, many meetings, and I keep warning you about it, and there's just nothing. And frankly, you're going to pass a 10% water bill increase, and Alderman said 10 cents. No, it's 10%. I heard that, but it's, frankly, it's outrageous. Because there is no analysis of anything, yet you're beating up the library board. It's ridiculous, truly ridiculous. And frankly, what's going on here is just politics and silliness. And frankly, the city operates behind closed doors far too much. We saw that, you know, you're worried about the library spending money. Why did we spend money on a patio? I'd like to know. So, frankly, there's all these problems here that aren't being dealt with. People have, are need to be accountable here for what's going on, and this council has a lot to be accountable for. So, frankly, you better start to really think about what I've asked you to do with that water department, because frankly, I see 10% increases continually here. I think one of the local news outlets said there's been increases for the last five years. And I don't know if that's completely true or not, but frankly, I've looked at this enough to realize it's a total mess, and where is the report that you've paid $80,000 for? Why hasn't it been presented to this council? There's no excuse. You paid $80,000 for a report that's not been presented. Why is it being hidden from the public? Where's the transparency? Just, you know, keep smiling, but where's the transparency here, really? It's really quite a mess. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Halliburton.
I'm Nathan Halliburton, owner of Halliburton Funeral Chapel in Evanston. In 1951, I took a course in social science called government. It explained all the way executive, legislative, judicial, all the way down. Now, I was told that the government is all formed by the people. Now, I get to Evanston, and I get to the people who need the vital records department. And of course, I want to commend the city manager for his new promotion, extended contract for doing a good job at reducing the budget and money, but I think in some areas, if it's not broke, you shouldn't be trying to fix it. I also think just if a mechanic is doing a good job with his socket wrenches, if you take him away and give him a pair of pliers and want him to tighten the nuts, I don't think he can do as good a job. I think if you amputated one of my arms, I could still carry 50 pounds in this one, but if I had both arms, I could carry 50 in each arm, and in that way, I could carry 100 pounds. I would like to see the vital records department stay. I would like to see it stay intact. If it has to go, I would like to see the level of proficiency that it's been before, because if it comes now with 50% or less efficiency, it's not only going to hurt us funeral directors, but these poor people who have lost loved ones and who need service. Death certificates and other things. I know nothing about the birth department, but I can tell you about the funeral. And it's a sad situation when they come, and they need some help. And the city is supposed to provide some services regardless of money. But if we put everything as finances, as opposed to services, with some things, we do not. The police department don't raise enough money and tickets to pay their salary for our department either. So, the vital record should not have to raise enough money to pay, to help people to operate it efficiently. So, I would just like to see it operated efficiently, whatever the decision is, and if it's already been made, so be it. But I just would like to see it. And I will be back again if the service declines. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Walsh, Jim Hughes, Tiffany Rice, and Priscilla Giles.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I spoke to the Planning and Development Committee, and when I signed up to speak there, I frankly didn't realize that seven of the nine aldermen on the council were also on planning and development. So, I will not repeat all of my comments. However, what I addressed was the proposal that comes before you tonight for introduction, for text amendments that will affect the Central Street Overlay District in the zoning ordinance. I will add to my earlier comments that density in any neighborhood, and particularly in the Central Street Overlay District, is expressed in more ways than simply the number of units in a development. The proposal that comes before you proposes to maintain the prohibition against certain site development allowances within that district, one of which is for the number of units within a development. But I ask you to recall that density is expressed and articulated in many more ways than simply the number of units in a development. Setbacks at side yards and front lot lines also create or reduce density. And I submit that when action is taken on this in two weeks, that those are site development allowances that should remain subject to the prohibitions that are currently in the zoning ordinance for the Central Street Overlay District. My second comment is that the proposed changes to, that are being made through this text amendment is much more-- amendment is much more than tweaking of the zoning ordinance as it affects the Central Street Overlay District. This ordinance and the Central Street Master Plan were unanimously adopted by the council back in two thousand and seven and in January of two thousand and eight. Central Street Neighbors Association does not oppose tweaking within that ordinance and does not oppose tweaking of certain text amendments. But this proposal, as it is presented to the council, will once again create open season for developers in the Central Street Overlay District as existed before the master plan was adopted and before the zoning changes were made in two thousand and eight. And the neighbors will be back to addressing every development that creates a greater density than should be allowed in those neighborhoods, and that will come rather than having the certainty that we have now with the prohibition on certain site development allowances. I will reserve my other comments until, well, until two weeks from now when I understand this will be up for action, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Tisdale, members of the City Council, thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jim Hughes, and I'm an Evanston resident. I'm here tonight in support of the Evanston Public Library Twenty Fifteen Library Fund Budget and Leving. It's my opinion that the budget increases are in keeping with sound management policies and will keep the library on a good financial footing. A significant portion of the increases will go to providing health care under the Affordable Care Act. It's notable probably that the library has a disproportionate number of employees affected by this new requirement, more than the city departments combined. The budget, library budget also provides for necessary future maintenance of buildings and facilities. I think we all agree that preserving the value of our buildings and facilities is good planning. I think that EPL is also efficient in the use of tax dollars. Michael had a long list of things that happened to the library. I looked at the Institute of Library Services, Museum and Library Services website. For two thousand and twelve, the library, when you look at circulation and local revenue, ranks number five out of ninety-two in efficiency. You're not only getting a lot of services, you're getting them done very well. And I think this is due, no doubt, to the professionalism and dedication of the staff and the value placed on the library services by the Evanston community. This is an absolutely necessary budget increase. However, in my opinion, Evanston needs to invest further in its libraries. Evanston needs to look at human development just as we look at economic development. Both are equally important for community development. Both require investment. Evanston can do better by focusing more purposefully on the role of the library in community development and in all the community, including the areas traditionally underserved. In this regard, EPL is more than a stack of books, a card catalog, and a circulation desk. The library November calendar, there are over two hundred and ten scheduled daily events, including some Michael mentioned. A specialty needs family resource fair where over eighty residents learned about services from twenty local service providers. A speaker series on navigating real-life diversity in partnership with the District Sixty-Five PTA Council. Demand required two additional sessions to be scheduled. The Affordable Care Act navigators mentioned earlier, and some days there, they're all day, right through a week. EPL will also be a key asset as Evanston organization shaped goals and plans for the Cradle to Career Initiative, which seeks to make lasting difference in the lives of our community children, communities' children, youth, and families. It is events and programs like these that have a real payback as the investments, same as we make investments in city streets and parks. My opinion is that events and programs like these at EPL are worthy of future investment in Evanston. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council. Tiffany Rice. And tonight, I'm representing the Day J Coleman Foundation, excuse my voice, but I'm here to express my support for Evanston Public Library and their programming and just talk about some of the good things that they've done in the community recently alongside us. So it's not often that you see a public library so deeply and directly involved in community issues, nor is it often that you see them as a face, one of the faces of anti-violence advocacy. However, Evanston Public Library has done some unique and uncustomary work in community outreach, especially in the area of youth violence. Had it not been for EPL and our partnership, we would not have been able to distribute over five hundred copies of the book, How Long Will I Cry: Voices of Youth Violence, this past summer. And the program was so creatively designed that copies were not just available at Evanston Public Library, but in various places throughout the community, including Fleetwood Jordan Community Center and two barber shops, Church Street Barber Shop as well as Ebony Barber Shop. So along with, a part of the program was hosting book discussions, several book discussions throughout the course of the summer, and had it not been for Evanston Public Library's real commitment to build a better, safer, united, and socially conscious community, we would not have been able to host several of those well-attended book discussions that were attended by some city officials as well as youth. A great number of our youth attended and read the book. There was also a dramatic reading put on by the Teen Lofts Teen Theater Troop that was well-attended as well. Their sincere effort to address issues that affect the community at large and continue the conversation of youth violence is noteworthy and of real importance. As a victim of youth violence, I never would have expected a library to be one of my greatest allies, supporters, and partners, and EPL has been just that. I think that's the rarity of their particular service delivery that makes them such a driving and necessary force in our community. Our foundation has accomplished great things because of our collaboration with them, and we will continue to work with them in other areas where our missions may intersect. So I would urge the entire community, especially city officials, to endorse the work that they are doing, stand behind them, and support them in as many ways as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Priscilla Giles, and I want to speak to the Vital Records. My mother had the misfortune to be born in Chicago, although she was an Evanston resident, and I am still trying to get since two thousand and seven her birth certificate corrected through Chicago. I'd like for Evanston to keep their, the people who they have so that we can get our records and not have to wait as long and have as much trouble as I'm still waiting for her birth certificate. I'd also like to speak to the Emerson Square project that has been, since two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight, has had petitions signed and people asking for that land that is now using part of the apartments and want to expand. That was asked for, was asked that we would be able to have a place built that we would be able to teach our youth, places, have a place where we could teach our youth, something that they could do to earn a living for the rest of their lives. Now, we have apartment buildings, we have a lot of vacant buildings, and the park that is there, the very small park that is there, you want to sell that and make that a city park and take the large, beautiful green space that Evanston says they want to keep green space, sell that, and put that on more concrete and brick. Concrete and brick cannot ever be as beautiful as the green. And I don't think we are being heard, but maybe the money speaks louder than the people. Thank you.
Thank you. The last two speakers are Ben Shapiro and Betty Esther.
Mayor Tisdale, Alderman, City Manager Bob Quitz, and City Clerk Green. Good evening. One of the joys of speaking last on the library issue, I think, is that all my points have already been made for me. So I will address you as a retired librarian of forty years, a retired library director, and a current member of the library board. Libraries, public libraries in this country serve a very special purpose. Schools serve those who are of school age and their parents. The police serve those in need as do the fire department. The public libraries serve everyone in the community, regardless of need, economic capability, intelligence, schooling, whatever. You are welcome in our doors, and we will give you all equal service. So, and that has been a motivating thing for me all through my career as a librarian. When I speak before you, I want to urge you, I want to make it very clear that I'm urging you to support this levying increase. It goes directly to several, fifty percent of it goes to costs that are mandated that the library must meet. But the balance goes to very important things for the whole community. There are several part-time, seven part-time employees who are covered under ACA now who are increasing to full-time at minimal expense, but it means that we can provide more services. We are also bringing on three seasonal employees to meet that increased demand that we have every summer as we do reading work to make sure the kids do not slide backwards in their reading readiness between school years. This is a critical thing for our community. A lot more of the money will go towards covering these things that we've discovered in last year's engineering study that points out that the library, now twenty years old, the building now twenty years old, has significant issues with the roof and the facade and the HVA system. And the board has decided that it is best for the taxpayer, that it is cheaper in the long run, that we approach this as a non-bond issue, that we do it as pay-as-you-go or through a line of credit. This will save the taxpayer money in the long run. So this levying makes very good sense in terms of services and the financial viability of the library. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Betty Esther. I want to speak on Resolution Ninety-One R dash fourteen, which is the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget of the city of Evanston. During the budgets discussion and hearing, we heard a lot about a three percent cut across the board from all the departments and everything, and this will save money and the taxes will not be raised. Oopie. Then there came, well, there was the discussion, and then the decision was made, oh, in the Health Department, we're not going to cut three percent, we're going to put back the Vital Record Department, which means that cut three percent won't happen. At the board meeting, I heard, we are putting one staff back, we putting the perks, so we're putting that back, we won't have a three percent, but we're going to raise the fee for what the person has to pay for coming to get the death certificate and the birth certificate and other service that will be in line with what is charged at the Skokie Courthouse. So we will have a revenue increase. If you have any revenue increase in a service that is so vile that you need to put back, why not put it back intact, in whole, with both staff people? You're not cutting it three, you're gaining there. We, I've asked, and we never know what three percent was going to be cut. When you stop spinning on something, right now, I'm buying that shopping bag, so that's my three percent. So I'm gonna stop buying that shopping bag, and it will not be handed up there again. So as, the question has been asked and not answered across the board from each department, which service will the three percent is covering when it's cut out? Also, tonight, you'll be voting on extending Ashland Avenue up into the Emerson Square subdivision. Also to introduce what's on the discussion in the P and D was the West Evanston Plan, which says, which include revising the zoning ordinance, making step improvement, and encouraging new business and housing development. This is a development that happened in a zoning area, that you're not going to change that zoning. I think you should not vote on this until after you have completed the zoning, for the very fact that this zoning was a farm-based zoning plus an overlay district. You need to do that and complete that first so that to make sure whatever you're doing will not later come back, and you have to make another decision to try to correct what you were planning to do with A four, Resolution Eighty-Three R dash fourteen, which extend the street that the city would own into a dead-end cul-de-sac. So it would be practical to hold that item until after the discussion on the revised zoning has taken place. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please? I beg your pardon, I thought there were more speakers. I'm not quite ready here. There we go. All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry for the delay. First item on the consent agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of November ten. Administration Public Works Committee met this evening, and we ask you to approve the payroll through November two. Two million, six hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty cents, the city bills, through November twenty-five, two million, eight hundred seventy-eight thousand, twenty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. A three point one is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Three two is approval of purchases of insurance renewals, property excess liability, and excess workers' compensation for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. Total amount is five hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. Approval is requested for contracts for water treatment chemicals to purchase in FY two thousand and fifteen. I'm not going to read them all, they're all listed there, they, everything from aluminum sulfate to polymer. The total amount is four hundred seventy-seven thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty cents, and it's an annual purchase. Approval is requested also for financial assistance through the Facade Improvement Program for Bangers and Lace at eight-ten Grove Street. It's a fifty-fifty cost-sharing, not to exceed ten thousand, five hundred dollars. We ask your approval also for service agreement for the two thousand and fourteen Certificate of Rehabilitation Program with the James B Moran Center for Youth Advocacy to provide legal services for not less than nine Evanston residents to secure certificates of rehab in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. This is through the Community Development Block Grant Budget, thirty thousand dollars. We ask your approval to adopt Resolution Forty, Eighty-Three, I'm sorry, Eighty-Three R fourteen, authorizing the execution of an agreement to purchase property for a park and accept a dedication of land for the new Ashland Avenue Extended Roadway, all within the Emerson Square subdivision at a cost of ten dollars. We ask your approval also for Resolution Eighty-Nine R fourteen, which amends the two thousand and fourteen budget of the general fund expenditures by one million, six hundred twenty-two thousand, fifty-three dollars from eighty-nine thousand, twelve, eighty-nine million, twelve thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars to ninety million, six hundred thirty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. A six is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. A six is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. A seven is ordinance for introduction and action, I'll suspend the rules on this. It is 148014, amends the Class P liquor license, allowing for the sale of alcohol in containers with volumes of two hundred milliliters or greater, which is more or less something like a cup.
And we have a bottle.
Pardon me?
We have a bottle.
Oh, we have a bottle, okay. Well, we'll put it on display later. We're moving for introduction of this, and also, Madam Mayor and Council, I'm moving to suspend the rules. Here we go. Very nice. How much is this?
About twenty dollars.
About twenty dollars, ladies and gentlemen? Looks like more than a cup. All right, so next is Ordinance 133014, the city of Evanston, 2014 tax levy. This should be off the consent agenda also. Ordinance 134014, 2014 special service area for tax levy. This is for action tonight. A ten is Ordinance 135014, the Evanston Public Library, 2014 tax levy, is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Next, we have city water work system charges, rates, fees, and penalties, is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Next, we have Ordinance 136014, permitting the retail sale of wine, refrigerated beer, and/or unrefrigerated beer in original packaging for consumption off the premises with the retail sale of food products. This is for action. Adoption of Ordinance 128014 is requested and authorizes the manager to negotiate and execute a commercial lease with 2022 Central LLC.
Could you take that one off, too?
Okay. It's off the consent agenda. Next item is for adoption, Ordinance 140014, amends Title X, Chapter XI, Section X, Schedule XC, by including the east side of Ewing Avenue from Harrison Street to the restricted thirty-minute parking, thirty-minute space at Central Street, as limited two-hour parking between the hours of nine AM and six PM any day except Sunday and national holidays. We ask your approval for Ordinance 141014, which would eliminate the residential permit exemption for two-hour parking restrictions in the eight-hundred and nine-hundred blocks of Noise Street to better manage the increased business activity in the area. Under Planning and Development, we have Ordinance 145014 for introduction, grants a special use for a single-family detached dwelling in the B1 Business District at 1513 Greenleaf. Is this to have the rule suspended, Alderman Braithwaite, or whoever? Yes? This is for introduction, and Madam Mayor and Council, I also move to suspend the rules on this one. Ordinance 146014 is for introduction and has to do with granting a special use permit for commercial indoor recreation bar code at 604 Davis Street. Next is Ordinance 147014, granting a special use for a Type II restaurant, Domino's Pizza, at 911 Foster Avenue. This is for introduction, and the agenda says suspension of the rules, but we've been told that's not going to happen, so we won't do that. Next is Ordinance 144014, zoning ordinance text amendment modifications to Central Street Overlay District, is for introduction. Ordinance 120014 grants a special use for a daycare center, child daycare center, at 1909, 1911 Howard Street. Madam Mayor, this is for introduction, and I'd also moving to suspend the rules the committee has approved. There are no recommendations for appointments, and therefore I move the consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Nine to nothing, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Holmes, would you walk us through A and PW?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Beginning with A six, Resolution 91R-14, fiscal, I'm sorry?
A three-one.
I didn't.
Yes, let's take them off.
A three-one?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. I didn't hear that, I didn't.
It was taken off.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I missed it. Okay. A three-point-one, approval of a contract with ALAM Concrete Contractors Incorporated for the Civic Center of Sustainable Parking Lot Reconstruction Bid 41-60. It's been recommended by the staff to author, recommended to the city council to authorize the city manager to execute a contract awarding this Civic Center Sustainable Parking Lot Reconstruction Contract to ALAM Construction Contractors in the amount of one million, four hundred thousand dollars. Funding is provided by the Metropolitan Sanitary District for seven hundred and fifty thousand and six hundred and fifty from the parking lot.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Grover, did you wish to speak to that?
I did. I'm, I'm, this is a great project, and I'm glad that we found a contractor for the project that also satisfies our MWEBE requirements, but I don't want to let this go by without mentioning that Ozinga Brothers, which is our, our regular concrete supplier, is also, has also filed a lawsuit last year, joining Hobby Lobby and seeking exemption from the Affordable Care Act asserting that it is not obligated, should not be, required to include in their employee group health coverage essential preventative care for its women employees. Namely, Ozinga claims that its women employees' use of certain contraceptives is company business. I'm not so principled that I'm going to vote against this, but it was important enough to me to mention to you that Ozinga, as a matter of principle, is not looking to have its women employees have this essential coverage for preventative healthcare. And this is important to me, but I second the motion and will support this contract.
Thank you, Alderman Burris.
Alderman Grover, thank you so much for bringing this to our attention, and I will not support it. I think that we should do more due diligence on the contractors. We talk about making sure that we have enough contractors that are women-owned, minority-owned. Maybe we should be looking into due diligence as well on these type of things. I believe the majority of us on council would find this completely unacceptable. I will vote against it.
Thank you, Alderman Grover.
Ozinga is one of our, we have no reason to believe that they are not a good supplier, that their service and their product is not good. They've worked with us on the permeable concrete, I believe, but I, like you, Alderman Burris, am troubled by their position on the Affordable Care Act, specific to coverage of contraceptives for women, women employees. And I, unfortunately, I can't give you an update on where this lawsuit is right now, and it's pending, it was filed in 2013, and I assume it's still pending, I assume there's been no settlement or resolution of it. I didn't come to the meeting tonight with that additional information, because that might be relevant anyway.
I, I thank you so much.
So it's, like I said, it's important to me, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you, Alderman Wen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Can we hear from the staff on the time sensitivity of this matter, so that we could possibly get more information before we vote?
Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Council.
How about good evening? Sorry, Director Robinson.
It's, the snow season has begun. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Clerk Green, City Manager Bockowitz, who's at Robinson, Director of Public Works. We do have the, the ability to hold this to the next meeting, if council desires.
I would move to hold the matter.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Alderman Rainey, did you?
No.
That solved your problem? Thank you, Alderman Grover. Back to you, Alderman Holmes.
Okay, do we don't need to vote to, on the whole, just to hold it?
No.
Okay. Rodney, did you say we need to vote? To hold this?
No.
No? Okay, all right. All right, then, now I think we go to A six. Resolution 91R-14, the fiscal year 2015 budget of the city of Evanston. We had a discussion in APNW, and our staff worked to give us a new figure, because we removed, if I remember correctly, we removed the library budget from our total, which was two million, two hundred and sixty-five million, one hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and I think the new figure, I believe, is two hundred and fifty-seven million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Second right, Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Okay. So we move approval.
Second. It's been moved. I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey, did I not turn off your lighter? Did you wish to speak? Okay.
That, that amount includes the water rate increase, is it not?
It includes expenditures associated with it.
So we can't spend it if we don't have it, so.
That's correct.
Madam Chair, the Administration of Public Works, I think it might be helpful to skip this one and go to the water rate increases and see if we can resolve that.
In terms of, I'll go to the, huh, which one is?
A eleven. New ordinance for increasing fees and.
Okay, Madam Mayor, then we'll.
Just a suggestion.
Because we also, in APNW, you discussed the rate of ten percent for the water department, and it was recommended by Alderman to reduce that by, to five percent, and that would also have an effect on the total, I believe. The city manager requested that they would come back at a later date to give us what that would cover, but we would just reduce that, well, we first have to see if council is willing to do that, to reduce the rate from the recommended ten percent rate increase in the water department to a five percent. So that would be under A eleven. Ordinance 13714014, amending the city code Title VII, Chapter XII, relating to the city water work systems, charges, rates, fees, and penalties.
All right, so what do you want us to vote on first?
Well, we, I guess we have to move it, and then we'll have an amendment. Is that correct, Alderman Rainey?
Well, maybe.
What, I mean, you would, we'd move it first, and then you would make a recommendation to amend?
Well, I, I think, I don't think there would be a problem if we go up to five percent, but, but I do have a lot of inspector staff who's put in a lot of work on this, and, but, but like everything else, I, I think a ten percent increase in anything in this budget is just too much for people to bear, and a ten percent increase in the water rate is probably one of the most regressive increases we could have. A ten percent increase, it, it, the water rates, garbage rates, et cetera, are regressive because everybody uses it. And it goes in people's rent, it goes in, you know, homeowners pay it, everybody pays it. So I heard, I thought I heard during a break, that there would be some effort to come up with some massaging of the water budget, so that either tonight or in a date very soon certain, we could discuss it further with staff input.
Madam?
Go ahead, City Manager.
I reviewed the capital projects that, that could be impacted. The ten percent rate increase is about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Were to go down to five percent, that's about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Those projects that would, if we were to just eliminate one or two of those projects, I'm not comfortable at this point making that recommendation, because I think that that would inappropriately impact a certain areas of the community. I think, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I would recommend that perhaps you take item A eleven first and see if there is support of making a change to that. If there is, then we'd actually go back to the full budget, and if the budget is not funded with that revenue, we would come back at a future meeting to discuss that. But, Madam Mayor and Chair Holmes, perhaps it makes sense to, to consider A eleven first.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Is any transfer being recommended from the water fund to other funds, to other expenses that we could tap?
Again, Alderman Rainey, it's a large budget, there are likely other ways that it could be adjusted. Again, my recommendation to the council would be decide what you'd like to do with the rate. If you do not raise it ten percent, we'll come back at a future meeting to adjust the budget accordingly.
Alderman Burris.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to, I, I'm not in complete support of a ten percent, but I would like to know more information before we vote on the percentage. If we reduce the percentage, what will it impact and how much it will impact? I, I think kind of doing it on the fly is a little challenging, if we don't know the direct impact on what, what will be taken out. So if we can hold the vote on this, and to get more details of, as Mr. Bockowitz said, what, what will we have to take out, how much would we have to reduce before making that decision? I, I, I just don't feel like it's completely responsible to, to do that.
Well, I think there are some people who are ready to vote.
Well, I, I was gonna.
Alderman Wilson?
I think it's kind of straightforward, there's a set dollar amount, and as, as the city manager indicated, it's a large budget, so we're going to have to find something to cut. It's not a question of cutting, well, if we reduce this, it's this particular thing, we're going to have to make a decision on which thing we're gonna, we're gonna cut. And I'm not comfortable making any cuts to the water capital improvements. In fact, we are way, 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 way behind on our water capital improvements, and I think the irresponsible thing to do would be to disregard any more than we're already disregarding, so I feel very strongly that we need to, we need to proceed aggressively to get this water infrastructure done as quickly as possible.
Alderman Wen.
I agree with Alderman Wilson. I also think it's very critical for the city at this point to maintain our infrastructure and to demonstrate to all of these potential water customers that are definitely out there that we are committed to maintaining our water infrastructure. The selling of water is one of the great opportunities that Evanston has right now, and the way that we can indicate to future customers that we're really committed to that is by maintaining our infrastructure. So I, I don't think that we should back off on this at all.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
One of the other things we're telling our potential customers is that we can make, we can sell them water cheaply, and if we continue to raise our rates in Evanston, they're going to say, oh, you know, I guess we're going to have a, a cheaper rate for a year or so, but then we're going to get the Evanston effect. And I'm not saying, I mean, God knows, I've never voted against a public works water effort, ever in my entire life, and I'm not going to do it now, but we need to begin considering what it's like for people who get that water bill, because not only is water on that bill, but the huge sewer costs. And I was here on the day we voted, we instituted that hundred and, what, two-hundred-million-dollar sewer project. I have voted yes on every single capital project, every single bond issue, every single, you know, state of Illinois loan. We, it has to stop, I mean, people cannot open their water bill and see, and see a three-hundred-dollar water bill every other month. It's not just the water, it's the water, sewer, garbage, special pickup, everything in the world is on that bill, and it's, 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 for some of us up here, it has no effect on our life at all, but for people in this community, my God, we, we hear all night long from the library about how they're serving, you know, the poor, et cetera. These are the very people we're talking about. They, they're not getting. They, they're not getting any financial benefit at the library, but they're getting a disincentive from, from the water bill and the sewer bill. It's, it's a huge expense for people. If we're going to do thi, I mean, maybe there's a way we can delay half the projects until next year. Maybe there is, I don't know. Maybe the fleet doesn't need to be, you know, turned over this year. Maybe there are some ways we can save money. But, or maybe we can think of some way to help people who can't afford to pay. Did you see, ladies and gentlemen, you don't see this, the water shut-off list? It's incredible. It's incredible. And it's something we really have to think about, it, we really do. We cannot continue, you know, like Peter says, you know, it's, it's so many pennies per a hundred thousand home. You know, it, it doesn't work like that. It's real money to people and it hurts. And, and you know, I don't think anybody who's poor in this town wants to keep capital projects from happening. But we need, if we can think of a way to give the library a fifteen percent increase in their budget over last year, it is fifteen, it's eleven this year, but it's fifteen over last year, then we can think of a way to help poor people pay their water bill.
Thank you, Alderman Tennen.
I agree, I think if we, if we can help people who can't afford their water bill to keep the water on is, is, would be very important. However, I do support keeping the ordinance as is and the rate of ten percent increase. We had a catastrophic event on Central Street two years ago, it wasn't expected, but it, it happened. It happened one or two years too early. So, it, it, there were fourteen successive breaks in the, in the main, up and down, or along Central Street. And it did affect many residents up and down Central Street for not just days, but weeks. I think it's, I think we're living on borrowed time, and I think actually that's been, it's beyond borrowed time. We are living in a very difficult and almost, you know, catastrophic situation. So we need to bump up our water delivery service.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
And just to, to supplement what Alderman Tennen mentioned, we are going to put ourselves in a situation where we're going to have the sewer problem with the water supply. If we don't get this under control and get this stuff, this infrastructure done, then we are going to have a series of catastrophic failures and we're going to be adding on to, to the water bill like we had to do with the sewer bill.
Thank you, Alderman.
I agree with Alderman, but we got to just, we can't talk to people's.
Alderman Holmes, there are no lights on.
I'm absolutely confused, I don't know where I am.
I was going to try to strike that out with you, I believe we're at A eleven.
I know, we are, I'm sorry, I, I'm just teasing.
Which was moved and seconded. So why don't we just vote on A eleven and see how it goes?
Right, and then if we want to have the, and which I thought we were going to do in the beginning, and then there would be a motion to make an amendment, and then if we vote that down, then we will.
If it doesn't pass.
Absolutely, that's what I thought we would, that's the route we would go. So I'm moving ordinance one thirty-seven dash O dash fourteen, amending the city, Evanston City Code Title VII, Chapter twelve, relating to the city work systems, charges, rates, fees, and penalties.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to pass ordinance one thirty-seven O fourteen. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
No.
Alderman Tennen.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
No.
Five to, five to four.
Five to four, the motion passes.
Okay. Now we go back to A six?
Yes.
Ah, yes.
Which is to pass the budget at the, in the amount of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hun- um, two hundred and fifty-seven million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars for fiscal year twenty fifteen.
It's been moved and seconded to pass resolution ninety-one R fourteen, fiscal year twenty fifteen budget of the city of Evanston, and that is removing the library.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
No, the, the city council does not approve the library budget.
So, but we do, the, that's coming up on A ten, right?
You approve the levy, but you do not approve the budget. So this resolution has been amended since the committee meeting to remove any references to the library funds, the three library funds.
Thank you for that explanation. Alderman Rainey, did I, did I mess up your light? I'm sorry, I seem to be doing that tonight. Alright, it's been moved and seconded. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tennen.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite. Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.
Okay, A seven, do we need to do anything with A seven? I know we were looking to see the size of the bottle, I think we can just, is that okay? Oh, we suspended the rules, so we're fine on that then. A ten, or?
A eight.
By A seven, we suspended the rules, but we have to vote.
We got to vote.
Oh, we have to vote on it, okay, I'm sorry. Alright, ordinance forty-eight dash O dash fourteen, amending class P liquor license aligned for sale of alcohol in containers in volumes of two hundred milliliters or greater.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to pass ordinance one forty-eight O fourteen. Seeing no lights on for discussion, city clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tennen.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
The motion passes.
A eight, I have.
Yes, A eight.
Eight eight?
Yes, it's all.
Okay, ordinance one thirty-three dash O dash fourteen, city of Evanston, twenty fourteen tax levy. Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded to pass ordinance one thirty-three O fourteen, city of Evanston, twenty fourteen tax levy. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tennen.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.
Ten to the next one.
Okay, I didn't know who took off eight, that's all I was asking. Okay, A ten, ordinance one thirty-five dash O dash fourteen, the Evanston Public Library, twenty fourteen tax levy. Move approval?
It's been moved and seconded to pass the Evanston Public Library, twenty fourteen tax levy. City clerk, would you call the roll?
The light, the light.
Oh, sorry, Alderman Burris.
Thank you. I spoke a lot at APNW about this, but, and then we had the citizen comment. And I want to respond to a couple of the comments made. No, I think anyone's disputing that the library does good work in the community. I think that's agreed, agreed upon. Thus, we're not denying Mr. Tannen's list of activities that the library does in all parts of the community. This isn't about doing good work, it's not about the list of activities that they've ticked off. It's about financial responsibility. An eleven percent increase is not financially responsible. The discussion is about those that are less fortunate than Messieurs Shapiro and Tannen, who came up and said that they would be happy to have their taxes raised. I checked the addresses of all the library board members. I believe only one may reside in or, or abut a CDBG area. CDBG, for those who don't know, is areas that are low and moderate income. Many of us serve on the CDBG committee. So we're well aware of what happens in those community, those parts of the community. Hence, raising taxes at such an exorbitant, extraordinary rate may not matter personally to many people on the board or people on this committee, on this council. But substantially increasing does rates, does hurt the most vulnerable members of the community. So again, it's not about being good or bad or doing activities, it's about finances. And thinking about the people that live in the community that aren't as financially resourceful as you are. That's what this is about.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, I believe that there is a place for us to agree. And so therefore, I'm going to move to hold this for perhaps the evening when we have our rules committee meeting. And maybe we could have a special meeting to discuss this matter.
I second the hold.
Alderman Wilson's light was on, would you like to speak?
Thank you. I, I think the idea of finding a common ground is a useful one. But, there, there are a lot of troubling things floating around. And I don't think we, up here as, as your city council members, we're trying to manage the business of the city of Evanston. And that's difficult because we're underwater in so many ways. The infrastructure, the pensions, it, it's virtually, not virtually, it feels like a hopeless endeavor. That's where a lot of the frustration from our side of the, of the table comes from. And it's difficult to make decisions. We have to make decisions every week, are we going to spend money on this or are we going to spend money on that? I end up unhappy for spending things, I, last meeting, we voted to approve the Divvy bicycles. I didn't like that, I voted against them even though I love bicycles. On the other hand, there are things I voted for that other people have felt very strongly against, for example, the water bill increase. The, one of the things I appreciate about the library budget is that I feel like it actually is more honest in that what it's doing is we're, we, we talk about transitioning to a pay-as-you-go kind of a model. So when you do that, it's going to cost more, just like with the water infrastructure. You have to make the investments on an ongoing basis. Instead of waiting until the civic center has water pouring through the walls and, and you spend extraordinary amounts of money to fix things that could have simply been maintained. The list goes on and on and on, streets, Robert Crown, facilities all over the city. And I think we have a tendency to want to, you know, buy or build or produce the shiny new thing because the shiny new thing is exciting and it's interesting. And it's hard to get away from that, it's hard to remember that what we need to do first is take care of the things that we have. At some point, the library was a shiny new thing, our library building is a speci, it's a spectacular facility. And the people that are working there are working very hard. It's, it's a difficult job when you don't have, my perception is they don't have the adequate staffing to do all of the things that they're trying to do. If you comparison shop, if you go to other libraries, the services you can get at the other libraries are oftentimes far better than what you can get in Evanston. That's not to diminish the work that's being done there because I think that they're doing, the efficiency rating, I think, reflects that they're doing as well as can be expected, particularly when you consider the pro-rata cost per, the per capita co, funding that we're giving them. So they're doing the best that they can with what we give them. And the idea that they're not being responsible or that they're not being reactive, isn't really fair. You know, if we want to talk about the, you know, truly regressive things, I have to put some of that back on myself. You know, I'm paying the same amount for the cup of water that someone else is paying. As far as the taxes are concerned, if somebody does live by the lakefront, they're paying a lot more property taxes. So, this isn't quite as regressive as some of the other things that even I'm supporting. So, I'll take responsibility for that. But I do think that what they've come to us is a thoughtful budget. I've looked at the line items, I don't have anything that I have any particularly strong objections to. I may, I could raise questions about it. But the increases, for the most part, are books and staffing. And I, I will be very, very disappointed if we can't move forward with this. Sometimes you win, sometimes you lose, I lose an awful lot up here. And I don't think that it's the responsible thing to push it back just to, just to have the opportunity to debate it or argue a little bit more. I don't think we're going to get any more clarity. And I'm just hopeful that we can move forward tonight, make a decision one way or the other, and, and move forward with some positive, you know, constructive work as a community.
Okay, I would like to point out that a motion to hold made by any two Aldermen, it can be overruled if, if a motion to overrule is duly made and seconded and is sustained by two-thirds of the Aldermen present.
A point of order, Madam Mayor, you've already violated Robert's rules by allowing him to speak after the, after the motion to hold over was made.
My apologies.
So now, now that we've had a little campaign to overrule the holdover, let's just, let's just go for it and do it and get it over with. I think it's extremely irresponsible not to sit down with the library board and see if we can't work something out. And by the way, I was the chairman of the mayor's special committee to build that library. So I know how important that library is, I, it is very dear to me. And I, I mean, I was really the main vote that led to the building of that library and asked anybody back in the day who was involved in it if that's not the truth. So, I have every intention of wanting to maintain the library, absolutely. But you know, staff, other, other issues, all the departments in the city were asked to cut three percent, all of them. Are you telling me that there are departments in the city, all of them, less important than the library? No, no. One of those departments is the Levy Center. You know, that, three percent, cut it. It's a beautiful building too. I mean, we maintain our buildings, we all vote on maintaining our infrastructure. This, this implication that I've heard tonight in several speeches is that we don't care about our infrastructure. Well, that's just not true, that's just not true. And anybody who says going out to bond at this time in our financial life, it's crazy. It's exactly the time to go out to bond. Would be the smartest thing the library could do. So I, I think, you know, while it's a very nice, touchy-feely speech, I think it's not realistic. It's not realistic at all. And you are ignoring a major segment of the population. And furthermore, an eleven percent increase, fifteen percent more this year than last year? It's, it's irresponsible, that's what it is. It's more irresponsible than, you know, cutting the water bill in half, or the, the percentage increase in half. So there's a motion on, there's a move on the floor to hold this until next Monday when we could, in the meantime, maybe have a conversation with the library board. Nobody from the library board ever talked to me, you know, yes, I didn't, so.
Please be quiet, that's not helpful.
Well, it's rude, that's what, it's just plain rude. And that's what I think this budget is rude. It's rude to the people of this town who are of modest means. And believe it or not, there's a lot of us.
Okay, well, there are two more people who want to speak, but you have to either go with the hold or make a motion to overrule.
There's a hold.
Absolutely, we have to, I think we should recognize that.
To next Monday night where hopefully we can, and see if we can't figure out a way. I mean, if they're in transition and they're not going to talk, then there's, there's no point in, you know, in holding.
Well, I, I don't know about anybody else, but I've already spoken with them. So, I don't know how many more times that would help. Okay, city attorney, we have it.
I, I, my light is on.
I, I know your light is on, Alderman Wen, and Alderman Burris's light is on as well. But, there's been a motion to hold and a second, and nobody's made a motion to overrule the hold.
You need to call on one of us.
Alright, so unless you're making a motion to overrule.
That's exactly what I'm going to do.
Alright, and Alderman Wen, I'm calling on you.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to overrule the hold.
Alright, Alderman Burris, do you want to speak to that?
Earlier, there was a hold and a second, and we were told that we couldn't vote.
Earlier, there was a hold and a second, and we were told that we couldn't vote on holding it or not. So I think we're changing rules midstream in tonight's meeting. So just...
Well, you don't really need...
If you're going to do point of order, then we should go back to that first hold. Either... It's either we have to do it consistently, not just with things we like or don't like. We need to do it for everything, so...
All right. Alderman Burris, let me read the rules to you.
No, I'm not disagreeing with you on the rules. What I'm saying is earlier in the meeting, there was a hold and a second, and it was stated by you that there wasn't going to be a vote on it. We can't vote on it. If an Alderman says a hold and you get a second, you don't vote on it. And if that's the case, then I was fine with that. But what we did is then now with something that some people up there are not excited about, holding, now the rules have changed. My whole point is just to be consistent on... Earlier, we said...
We don't usually vote on a hold. It's just automatically done.
But we were told not to.
Unless there's a motion to...
But we were told that there wasn't... Am I remembering this wrong?
This is the way to do it, the way we're doing it now. The way we did it before, you ignored the whole...
No, I believe the rule is that we do not... We don't take a vote on whether to hold or not. But you can have a second motion to override the hold. That's different than taking the vote.
What Mayor Tisdale said in the first hold was, "We don't vote..." If two Aldermen ask to hold, we hold, is what was said. So I'm just being...
We hold unless...
But it was said, "We hold." There wasn't anything about doing an overrule. All I'm asking for is consistency, and we've...
We are following Rule 18 of the Rules and Organization of the City Council of the City of Evanston.
But earlier in the meeting, it was not done that way.
Okay. City Clerk, it's been moved and seconded. Would you to override... Overrule the hold? Would you call the roll?
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
No.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Burris?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
No.
Five to four, it passes.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't.
It has to have two-thirds vote. So it's held until the Rules Committee meeting. You have to make a motion for a special council meeting.
I'm going to do that at Call of the Wards. Alderman Rainey. I think we're now on A13. Ordinance 128-0-14, authorizing the lease of 2022 Central Street. Evanston with 2022 Central LLC doing business as Lush Wine and Spirits. Move approval.
Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I just had a bit of a concern on the lease, and I apologize for not having caught it and raised it previously. But with regard to the tenant improvement, the credit... And this is on page 187 on the packet, Section C. It says that the... Where is that? Okay. Landlord will reimburse the tenant for a portion of the tenant improvements. And it basically puts the responsibility on the tenant to do the apportionment. So tenant will apportion the tenant improvements, which are covered by the total improvement rebate. And it also states that, quote, "After lease execution, the parties will meet and confer over the scope of work and cost estimates to determine the final amount of the tenant improvements." So I'm just not real comfortable making a decision on what that... What the abatement's going to be after we sign the lease. Does that make sense? I mean, in other words, we're giving them an abatement of almost the entire amount of the rent. And... But we're making a decision on how much that abatement's going to be after we sign the lease. So I'm not super comfortable with those terms.
Alderman Grover?
What information at this point? Alderman Wilson would assist you now. The prospective tenant is here. Can describe the general and specific amount of the kind of renovations that they plan to do for the space.
Okay.
We hear tonight that Domino's is planning a half a million dollars of renovations to the space on Foster.
Right. I think, well, now apparently, we're going to have a council meeting a week from today. Would it be an undue impediment to... I'm not sure which individuals are here for the... Would it be too much of a difficulty if we held it till the next meeting, which will be a week from tonight?
Is there specific information? Actually, the lease has maximum amount of the abatement for the improvement of the basic building, which the city can't afford to renovate.
Right. It's got a maximum, but it's not clear to me how that will ultimately get apportioned. And the lease language, it looks like it gives you the sole authority to do the apportionment. And I'm not sure...
Absolutely. That's not exactly correct. So the maximum amount of abatement has to do with bringing the building up to code with new electric, water, storefront, air conditioning, heating, the floor that's collapsing inside, and that the library and I... Paul and I will meet as soon as we have finalized numbers after we have a building permit from the city to bring it all up to code, to bring it to sort of a conventional vanilla box approach to real estate.
Okay. And I saw the WISJANEE information. Do you have bids or estimates for that work yet?
We do. We had a... We have a rough estimate because the building permits and the architect hadn't finished drawing the plans because we didn't have a lease yet. So the library's estimates was about $200,000 to do the construction based on some exploratory work that still needs to be done on the subfloor and on taking down the ceiling to see what condition the roofing structure is in. So there are some things that we still need to do exploratory work on to get a final estimate. But we've agreed that the vanilla box portion would not be more than $175,000.
Okay. I did some math, but I think I'd estimated the... Maybe I did it wrong. The amount came out to like closer to over $200,000, the abatement. But maybe I...
There's interest, there's carrying costs for the financing of that renovation.
Okay.
Which we agreed to a rate that's less than what we can possibly get from a bank because we're not a government institution.
All right. Well, that's, I guess, the information I guess I'd like to see before we committed to it, just if we could get those estimates and then a breakout of what those, you know, what that... Those rates are. And could we just get that within a week and come back? Is it going to unduly impact you as far as getting the stuff done? That's my question.
It has a number of impacts. One is that the architect needs to finish drawing the plans, which he started on, but I not necessarily want to finish paying him to do unless we have a lease on a space that doesn't belong to us. We're improving a City of Evanston property that doesn't belong to us, but we're financing the renovation of that building. And I'm happy to provide you with copies of the contracts once they're done. I'm not sure... You know, we won't have final contract numbers until we have a building permit and can get final quotes on renovating the building.
Okay. I think probably I'm the one who's overly concerned, so maybe we can just proceed tonight. If I could just get the information after the fact.
Absolutely. Be happy to provide it to you.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, I was just going to say, we have all sorts of models on Howard Street of how to do this. So if anybody's... I mean, if... Really? I mean, it worked out very smoothly. Everybody paid everybody back and is paying... So if there's... Maybe the library boards are not used to renting things to people. I don't know. But it's the City of Evanston building, right? Or is... Shouldn't... I mean, it sounds like very complicated, but it shouldn't be.
Okay. So you want to... It's been moved and seconded to authorize the lease of 2022 Central Street. Evanston with 2022 Central LLC, DVA, Lush Wine and Spirits. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
I have no idea.
Indecisive. Burris?
Aye.
Fisk? Braithwaite?
Aye.
And you and I, Rainey? Okay. That's seven to two.
The motion passes. Alderman Holmes, does that complete your report?
Madam Mayor, that completes the report.
All right. Thank you very much. Alderman Fisk, planning and development?
I don't think there's anything left on planning and development.
There's nothing on there. Congratulations. Wait a minute.
No, nothing was held on. Wait a minute.
Okay. We're not suspending the rules.
No, just suspended a rule. It was P1. P1 was suspended the rules.
All right. P1. Alderman Fisk, on P1, did you want to suspend the rules?
Oh, okay. Sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
We already suspended the rules.
And P5 as well.
We're suspending the rules on P1.
And 5.
It's already suspended. And then we suspended them already.
Yes.
Yeah. So we just need a...
Action.
Okay. Okay. So action for P1. Ordinance 145-014, granting a special use for a single-family detached dwelling at 1513 Greenleaf. ZBA and city staff recommend city council adoption, granting a special use permit for a single-family detached dwelling in the B1 Business District. The requested special use permit will allow for the rehabilitation of a blighted property in an existing neighborhood business district. The applicant has complied with all zoning requirements and meets all of the standards for a special use in the B1 Business District. That's for approval.
Okay. That's a motion?
Yes.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 145-014. Seeing no lights on for discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris? Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
The motion passes.
Okay. Now to P5. Ordinance 120-14, granting a special use for a daycare center for children at 1909 to 1911 Howard Street. The zoning board of appeals and staff recommend adoption of this ordinance, granting a special use permit in the C1 Commercial District. In response to a request of the October 13, 2014 P and D meeting, the applicant has now provided a letter of intent outlining the proposed tenant lease that commenced September 1, 2014, and this is for approval.
It's been moved and seconded to pass ordinance 120-14. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing. The motion passes. All right. That... Let's call it. Next item is Call of the Wards. Alderman Wen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I'll do the same, but I'll also make a request that we set a special city council meeting for December 1 to address the library issue. Do we need to make that request independently? Okay.
I'd be happy to call it.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd also like to make the same kind of request for a special meeting so that we could take up the issue of Domino's Pizza.
Perfect.
And also just want to say that today at Church and Dodge was the Central Evanston Business District, SEBA's Open House as a part of the Small Business Week. And they had an open house, which was greatly well-attended even with the weather. So it was really great. And that's a new group that we have started on the west side of Evanston, which is great.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alderman Tindham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I hope everyone's enjoyed and had a very happy Movember. The mustache is a reminder to... For people to ask if they don't know what it's about, it's about raising awareness for men's prostate and testicular cancer. So happy Movember and happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, yeah. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm thinking of cities tonight. First, Ferguson, Missouri. So our thoughts go to Ferguson, Missouri. Second is the... I attended last week the National League of Cities Conference. The themes were innovation. We had good discussions about off-campus housing, the sharing economy. I'll send around a written report. I'm happy to share it with anyone. Highlights of it were a tour of the Austin Animal Center, a $12 million LEED gold-certified building with an $11 million budget, and 18,000 animals that go through this facility every year. Evanston was also recognized... I've left at your diocese the pin for the Star Communities. And I got to admit, I didn't realize what a big deal it was. I thought it was just kind of nice, but turns out it's pretty fairly great. Evanston was recognized and honored at the... Both at a reception sponsored by Star Communities itself and in the opening of the general session of the National League of Cities Conference with all those cities that have achieved five-four. We are four-star and three-star ratings by the Star Communities. So again, a big thanks across all departments for everything that went into achieving our four-star status and to Catherine Hurley for all her work on it as well. So as always, the National League of Cities Conference is just great perspective on what we do in Evanston and how we do it. And it just confirmed for me that we are doing so much so well here. So thank you for letting me go.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Last week, I attended a memorial service along with Alderman Fisk of Jack Segal, who was a longtime city attorney, corporate counsel for the City of Evanston and many, many other communities, some of which he served for 50 years. The memorial service was an amazing event of respect for a man who was known as Mr. Zoning, Mr. Municipal Lawyer. There were hundreds of people there, and it was at the Standard Club. And I met with Mrs. Segal, who expressed how grateful she was that Evanston actually sent somebody to the event. Well, we went on our own. We weren't sent. But I'm going to request that you create, you know, a resolution honoring him. Every city that he served did that at this memorial service with the exception of Evanston. And I felt that I had missed the boat on not asking for that, but could we do that, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Burris? Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Alderman Rainey, for those remarks about Jack, the father of Illinois municipal law, incredibly respected in the field and with family living in Evanston, which is wonderful. Alderman Holmes, that's fine with me about the meeting regarding Domino's. I did talk to the Domino's representatives, and they offered and have agreed to have a meeting with neighbors, and I'm hoping that will happen before the meeting that we take any action on. So the ball is kind of in their court, but I think you and I can help make that happen. And coming up before, in the not-too-distant future, is a first ward meeting on December 2, which is Tuesday from 7 to 9 at the library as usual. So I hope to see you there.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick words to, happy Thanksgiving to the all the residents and city staff. Alderman Holmes, I wasn't there at the same time, but I did have an opportunity to go by Church and Dodge, and it was an amazing event. And giving a special shout-out to Wendy and, if I forget, Clarence Weaver, residents of the second ward, congratulations on your success. And then also thank you, Alderman Grover, for mentioning the family of Ferguson's. I'm also sending just a word of condolences to the family and prayers for the residents of the city. I think anytime you have a high-profile event like that, it's time to pause, but I also hope that as we are expressing outrage for that decision, that we remember the thousands of Black youths that are killed each day on the streets of America. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, a couple of things. First of all, with the special council meeting that you just called for December 1, my suggestion would be that we would call that for 6:30, have the Rules Committee at 6 o'clock. You have a couple of items on that agenda, which I think would be important to still do. So if that's all right with everyone, we'll call the meeting for 6:30 with an intention being done within an hour for Human Services at 7:30. Thank you for your support of the fiscal year 2015 budget. I would like to recognize the three individuals here in the room who have worked tirelessly on that. Marty Lyons, as you know, throws his heart and soul into the budget process, and as our chief financial officer, in addition to being the assistant city manager, has led a tremendous budget team. And Marty, I want to thank you for your good work. Alex Thorpe, Alex is the new member of the team. Alex was glad to get the budget out because then his wife had a baby shortly thereafter, and hopefully, Alex, now you're catching up a little bit on your sleep. No, not yet. But Alex, we appreciate your hard work and welcome you to the budget team. And then there's Ashley Porta, our budget manager. Ashley took on this role at the beginning of the budget cycle and has worked tirelessly to make sure that all the information that you have is complete and accurate, not only for you but for members of the community, so that we are as transparent as possible. It is sometimes difficult, certainly not for me, but for other members of the staff to hear members of the community come up, meeting after meeting after meeting, and really saying inaccurate statements about the process and inaccurate statements about the information. And it's not fair to Ashley and Alex and Marty and all of the colleagues within the city departments who work tirelessly to make sure that that information is accurate, that it is transparent. We had meeting after meeting after meeting, the council were asked questions. I think the final number was close to 70 pages of answers, and it is truly sad that members of the public had come up and really indicate that that's something to the contrary. So Ashley, I want to thank you for your many, many hours and weekends, long evenings of hard work to make sure that this community and this city council has the most accurate, complete, transparent information about a very large budget. We all take, Madam Mayor, members of the council, this responsibility very seriously. We take responsibility that the money that is paid by the residents of Evanston is all dear, does not matter where you live, what you do, writing that check for tax dollars is important. And your staff takes it extraordinarily seriously to make sure that the information you have and the decisions you make are as accurate, as informed as possible. So I want to thank the three of you for your outstanding work.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that tomorrow evening at 7 o'clock at the Unitarian Church, there will be a prayer service. The faith community is sponsoring that for Ferguson. And also, if you're not doing anything, you might want to come by there. We want to make sure that we'll never have a Ferguson in Evanston, and that's for sure. And the only way we can do that is by all standing together. So that is being sponsored by the Ministers Alliance. There was an email that said if the decision didn't come in before 7, they would hold it tomorrow evening. Otherwise, it would have been at 7 o'clock this evening. So tomorrow evening at the Unitarian Church at Ridge and Greenwood, together as Evanston citizens, 7 p.m.
Thank you. City Clerk?
I just want to, at this moment, take the time to thank the city manager, the council, and the staff for their condolences and their remarks and words of encouragement for my father's death. Also, the community at large who have done the same thing. Thank you again for the support that you gave me during my father's decease. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Those of us who've been on this council for a long time, I'm sure agree with me when I thank Wally and his staff for the leadership in adjusting our fiscal year. They're, the past, we, I can remember so clearly going through January, February, and up to February with the weather and the misery and nobody being allowed, I mean, there were guards at the city limits, you may not leave town until this budget is passed. And we worked on it for three, four months. And it was frequently on February 27 or February 26, she's shaking her head, when we were finally able to pass the budget. It always went to the last day.